Good afternoon and welcome to the CCBA Clackamas County Candidate Debate. Thank you for joining us as we navigate through these challenging times. A very special thank you to Jordan Remus for sponsoring this event. And we also want to thank the Oregon City Business Alliance and North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce for co-hosting. I also want to thank those of you who made donations to CCBA. We're doing our best to provide you with the most up-to-date information in a timely fashion, utilizing technology that is new to many of us. As such, we have several free webinars, including this one, so we really appreciate your support. If you haven't done so and would like to donate, you may do so at our website at www.ccbaviz. Thank you. As you know, there are three seats for the Clackamas County Commission that are up for election this May. To those of you joining us, I want to encourage you to use the gallery mode at the top right of your screen so you can see all the candidates at once. We only have 90 minutes, so we have a lot of ground to cover and eight candidates. Unfortunately, Tudy Smith has not joined us yet, maybe she will shortly. So I am going to keep you all timed, so please don't be offended, but I will cut you off if you go too far over your allotted time, so it is no offense meant. With that, let's start with introductions. I want you each to take two minutes to describe your top two priorities and what specifically you'll do to make an impact on them. Let's start with position one, which is for Chair. Chair Bernard.
Hi, I'm Jim Bernard. I was elected to the County Commission in 2009, as the Chair in 2016. Prior to the Commission, I ran a small business for 30 years, was President of a Regional Trade Association, President of a Downtown Association, founder of a Farmer's Market, and Mayor of Milwaukee for eight years. A month ago, my two priorities would have been very different. But today, it's save lives and get back to work. We can do that if we work collaboratively together with our state and regional partners. And there are no barriers to COVID-19. And we'll only be successful if we work together by following the experts and the data. So I think the most important area we should start is probably our rural communities, where there hasn't been a greater impact. And we're going to be working with our partners to figure out how to do that. Clackamas County is obviously very varied, and rural communities are probably the first place to start. And we're going to, again, look to our experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, let's move on to position three. That's Commissioner Martha Schrader, if you'd please start. Martha, I believe you're muted. Martha, can you hear me? Your microphone bottom left of your screen.
There we go. It's on my top right.
Oh, sorry.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's delightful to be here. I'm Martha Schrader. Many of you know me. I've been a county commissioner, I've been a state senator, I've been a farmer, teacher, and a librarian, so that's my background. I would say that my two priorities at this point is, number one, it's going to be key that we stabilize the county budget. We'll be having our first budget meeting this coming Wednesday. And basically, we will be working with the professionals who are on our professional staff, as well as the expertise of our budget folks, to really take a deep-down look at the budget and see what we are going to be facing. We have, thank goodness, put into process managing for results. And what that will give us a tool in order to tie tangible outcomes to actually what we should be doing. And that will give us a way to see, should we face a lack of resources, where we can implement efficiencies. The second thing that I think is my priority, and I think it's the priority for all of our commissioners, is to stay home and stay healthy initiative. This is an unprecedented period in our lifetime. It's going to be essential that we maintain, I believe, stay home, stay healthy, to stop the spread of this virus and flatten the curve. Dr. Fauci, as we know, who has been our premier epidemiologist at the national level, actually said this morning that the economy can only open when we get control of this virus. And I think it's essential we do that. We have a fantastic emergency operation command team that is working for you daily to make sure that we have the resources, the hospitals have the resources, we have all the equipment we need to face this. And then, once this is over, we're going to be working on recovery, I hope, with partners such as the Clackamas County Business Alliance, as well as our North Clackamas Chamber.
Thank you. Up next, for position three, Evan Geier. Evan, we lost your video. Why don't we go to Bill Osborne first, and then we'll come back to Evan?
Oh, there's Evan, okay.
All right, my name's Bill Osborne. Born and raised in Clackamas County. I've done a number of jobs from fleet maintenance. I was a commercial fisherman and a small business owner with a seafood business. Raised my family in the Oak Grove area. I grew up in Oregon City myself. I'm sure everyone's main focus at the moment is making sure we get back to normal life safely when this outbreak has ended. If for some reason, when I take office, that has not happened, I would work to ensure everyone is safe and back to work. We will beat this pandemic and move past it, as we have on so many other hardships. On that, I'm confident. My biggest priorities are to empower the residents of Clackamas County and represent you and your priorities. After all, this office isn't about what I want or any of us want. It's about ensuring you get what you need to be healthy, prosperous, and happy. I ask for your support so that I could support you. That is the main priority, the main priority every candidate should have. I believe you should be able to vote on any tax or fee increases. It's your money, you should have control of it. I have faith in the residents of Clackamas County to make the right decisions on those. As many of you have seen on my website, my family's been in this county for over 120 years. I'm invested, I'm always been in the neighborhood. I could think of no place I'd rather be and want to call my home. I want to improve livability here. I know that's a big issue. And I think through, you know, just listening to the people and using common sense, we can get there. I don't think this county is a bad county. I think it's great already. I think we can make it better moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Evan Geier, first seat, position three.
Good afternoon, everybody. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Evan Geier. The two topics I want to work on, start with the first one, safety. I want citizens to be able to work alongside the cops as trainees. You know, if the cops can start as a citizen and get trained to become a cop and move up, I think that regular citizens should also be able to just go in there and, you know, maybe a background check or something, and become kind of a trainee, and then they work alongside the cop. It's not like a job where they get paid, just kind of like communication between the citizens and the cops. And if they see what the cops are doing and they don't like it, they might say something. You know, they're new or they don't do it all the time, so it's fresh perspectives. And like, so if you're like, you see all those discrimination stuff, like the, you know, like on TV or the internet, like black people getting discriminated against and all these complaints about cops. So if you let them work within the system and they're a part of it because they want to and they're complaining, it's a better way for them to change it. It'll make things more safer, because they'll better understand each other, and then you can move forward. The second one is also, I'll be talking. I think I can improve on my ideas that will be presented today. That's what I think I can do. So the things I'll present today, there's actually a lot more details, these are short questions. So just kind of a warning on what I'm saying today, you know, it's not all 100%, but I think I can improve on what happens today.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the seat, excuse me, position four, starting with Commissioner Humberson.
Thank you, Nellie. And thank you, everyone, for joining this forum. I'm sorry we're not out there in a more personal level and knocking on doors today, but this is the way it is for us right now. My background was former Marine and retired law enforcement professional. I've also been a school teacher and also worked in the real estate profession. My priorities going forward have not changed a great deal in that what I was focused on then is apropos to where we're going, going forward now. We do need to get back to work as soon as we can, but we will rely on the professional expertise of our physician and our emergency managers to make that decision, as we should. All commissioners are generalists, not specialists, and it's important to pay attention to the professionals in the field. My focus has been on jobs a great deal in Clackamas County and things that facilitate jobs, and I intend to continue on that. To give you an example, cross-eliminated timber, which you've heard me speak about many times, I believe is an important opportunity for jobs in Clackamas County. And we have gotten someone to open a business here in Clackamas County in Estacada that will be processing cross-eliminated timber and provide family wage jobs. I hope to continue to work on that and expand that because our rural communities were still behind the curve when it came to economic recovery from the recession. High-speed internet throughout the county, I think, is a priority. And this has demonstrated the importance of high-speed internet for our county. There are students that have been unable to access the internet because they don't have high-speed internet at home. There are large blank areas where the speed is so slow that you simply cannot use it effectively. And we need to do something about that, and I intend to continue to focus on that issue. And finally, the land bank authority, where we repurpose industrial lands. I hope to be able to continue working on that and take those industrial lands, clean them up, repurpose them for family wage jobs here in Clackamas County. Economic recovery is going to be important coming out of this COVID-19 emergency, and that is going to be a primary focus of mine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry.
Thank you.
With that, we'd like to move on to Brianna Sagdahl, also running for position four.
Thank you so much, Nellie, and thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Brianna Sagdahl, and many people know me for my advocacy work and citizen lobbying in Salem. As your county commissioner, my top two priorities are to improve the quality of life and improve safety in Clackamas County. We do this by strategically working to make sure that every dollar spent by the county is a dollar earned by the county. County government should be seen as a public entity where taxpayer funds are carefully invested and outcomes promised are the outcomes realized. Data is key to ensuring public services are properly managed, high-quality, and well-delivered. One of the most meaningful steps we can take is moving from rhetoric to outcome-based solutions, like empowering our firefighters and equipping them with the tools they need to combat forest fires, and by expanding critical infrastructure so that our cars are not polluting while idling in traffic. Working with our sheriff's department and improving public safety, we need to ensure that our justice and law enforcement systems are working with the community to ensure that we are all partners in creating equitable, just, and a safe community in which to work, live, and learn. These objectives can be achieved by strategically working with not only our county, but also city and state entities, even those on the federal level. We cannot run as a siloed-out level of government. I'll be your voice on the county commission, and I will work cross-governmentally to ensure that we are leveraging every resource and tool to create a stronger Clackamas County for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mark Schoal, running for position four.
Yes, good afternoon. One priority is housing. The housing inventory shortage is causing our housing market to be amongst the most expensive in the nation. There are two main causes to this shortage. One is the highly restrictive Oregon land use laws and metro and urban growth boundary that cause land to be too expensive. Metro housing measures will never alleviate our housing problem. We must form a coalition of counties and with Oregon legislatures to push back Oregon land use laws and metro encumbrances in order that the county can zone for the housing we need. This issue also affects transitional homelessness, and we need to fix this problem right now. The second priority is transportation. Our county is in dire need of additional vehicular lanes. Traffic congestion is wasting millions of man-hours each year and wasting fuel. Congestion is also a safety issue. ODOT and Metro lack the sense of urgency. We are not getting the vehicular lanes we need to accommodate growth and efficiency. According to Metro and ODOT, the last phase of Sunrise Corridor from 172nd to Highway 26 may cost $473 million and is unfunded and could take until 2043 to complete. That's totally unacceptable. Congestion is increasing by the day. We must aggressively work with the state and federal agencies to press them into action. We need to take the leadership amongst the Board of Commissioners and not defer to Metro or any other outside agency. We need vehicular lanes built on our congested roads now. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are going to move on to the economy. And we're going to start with seat position four, then three, then one. So I'm going to try and give everyone an opportunity to go first at some point. So in light of the current situation due to the COVID-19 crisis, how do you propose restarting the economy? Is there a role the county can play to address the new staggering unemployment numbers? Brianna Sagdahl, would you start us off, please?
Thank you. The number-one thing on everyone's mind is how do we get Clackamas back up and running and reopened? First, we need to put pressure on our legislature and our governor to include robust economic answers to our county. And county-based barriers that make it more difficult to create value, like cap tax and cap and trade. I've been calling for a collaborative agreement between CCOs and county health to provide at-home tighter antibody tests and COVID-19 tests to limit unnecessary closure and quick work by those with immunity. And most importantly, and I can't stress this enough, we must ensure that if we are ever faced with a similar unexpected crisis, that we're better prepared, not only to respond, but to mitigate and resolve this in a timely manner. In the future, we owe it to all to learn from this mistake and to take the needed steps for prevention. Times like this show us why we need good management of government and why leadership is the most critical ability for those charged with responsibility.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to Ken Humberson.
Thank you. You heard in my original remarks that focusing on economic recovery is one of my priorities. Give you just one example of what we are doing now. We are taking $500,000 of funding out of our land bank authority fund, which means we were putting that on July for a little while. And we're going to be using that for micro-enterprise loans for businesses here in Clackamas County. Besides micro-enterprise loans, there will be...
Sorry. Oh, I did that. That was me. I'm sorry, Ken. I didn't mean to do that. You should be fine now.
Okay, there will be a cooperative working relationship with Clackamas Community College for retraining people. That's just a couple of examples of what we're doing at the local level with the funding that we have available. I'd point out, when it comes to the testing issue, unfortunately, like most jurisdictions around the country, testing is not available very much. We still are looking for supplies for testing, both for regular testing, and we still don't have an antibody test available to us at the county level. Obviously, we've been pressing the governor and the federal legislature for those things, but they have not yet been forthcoming. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark?
Yes. One way to help the people financially is to waive, look at the potential waiving penalties for late fees and late taxes. We need to also stay in touch with the State Unemployment Office to make sure our people are getting their claims processed in a timely manner. Also, I'm concerned about the CARES Act. I've talked to a lot of business owners, and it doesn't seem to be circulating down to them. We need to also look at the problems that this COVID-19 slowdown is going to cause on our budget for the rest of the year and even into next year. I would encourage businesses to continue random sampling and testing of COVID-19 as they get back to work and using teleconferencing to control potential problems, and also to be vigilant as the virus abates. And finally, workers come first in their health, consumers second in terms of products, and then profits third. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to seat three, and we'll start with Evan Geier. Evan, can you hear me?
It was on Bill. The green thing was on Bill.
Oh, okay. Well, now it's on you. So you got the mic.
So is this number two on the questions?
Yes, this is on the COVID-19 crisis. How do you propose restarting the economy? Is there a role the county can play to address the new staggering unemployment numbers?
Well, one of the things that I think would be a good idea for the county is for us to use many LED light bulbs in there. I mean, we can help get them in homes, get them in the government buildings. You can go to some of the stores, they got them at Dollar Tree. And then the light bulb costs $9 if you turn it on 24/7 for a whole year. It's under $9 to run that light. So bring costs down, and that's how you get more money. And also, since you were talking finances, I think we need to actually redo the statistics because people fall off unemployment. And so the statistics measurements that we have in government aren't actually set up to best help government. So things might look better than they are, and so the government reacts differently than maybe they should. So people not looking for work, yeah. So if we reset them to something more along the lines of people not looking for work, like we could even lower the age if we get, because we're really low on unemployment, at least we were before, if we can get back there. People younger than 12, people who haven't worked 35 years, and people who are younger than 75. I just kind of put those three things in there. But the 35-year thing is actually because if you're not working enough, and there are people who do this, then you can't get all the social security, like from the government and stuff, when you retire. So, I mean, they don't count all these statistics, you fall off the unemployment, and then some people just stop getting counted unemployment. So you see like 3%, 4%, 5%, and it's really like sometimes 6%, 7%, 8%, or maybe worse.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thanks, thanks a lot. And then Bill Osborne?
Thank you. I believe the county needs work in conjunction with local jurisdictions, the state and federal government. We're all in this together. At the county level, our main tool will be to solicit state and federal government if any extended help is needed. I believe we must follow all the medical advice, of course, before we start anything. Once we're there, we need to open businesses in a safe, responsible manner. I believe that service and production sectors are probably what we want to focus on first. Listening to the business owner's needs will also be key in the role that we play. Far too often, government will get in the way, and this isn't helpful to anyone. Reality there is there is going to be fewer jobs until we get back to normal, and it's not going to happen overnight. The county can help by removing some fees, lowering taxes on employers, helping encourage putting more workers back to work. We need to protect our workers who are victims of the financial ripples of this pandemic. Transitioning our neighbors back to their jobs as we move forward will be challenging, but ultimately, I believe, we'll succeed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll end with Commissioner Bernard.
Did Martha do it?
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I apologize. That was not intentional. Please, Commissioner Schrader.
Am I muted? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So let me find this here. Okay, I'm checking where I have left off.
And just to remind everyone, this is on the current situation due to the COVID-19 crisis.
So one thing, I think it's obvious that the economy is going to be started in phases, and I think everyone needs to understand this is not actually a normal recession. It isn't like a financial meltdown in 2008. This is a complete shutdown of the economy where the GDP has plummeted precipitously. So as we move forward with this, it's going to have to be a phased-in approach, actually, in order to move forward. And the first thing, again, we have to do is we have to continue to keep pushing for testing, not only for antibodies, but for COVID, who's positive for it. Because if we don't get a handle on that, then we don't know who's infected. We don't know who we can let back to work. We don't know how, when, and why we're going to open. So that's going to be key. And after that is over, after we get this under control, we can really start using the dollars that we are getting from our partners at the federal and state level. And at this point in time, I know that, let's see, we're getting $2.5 billion from the CARES Act and combined resources from the federal government, and it's going to be split between the three counties of Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington County. They'll be getting $2.4 or $2.5 billion. And the Association of Oregon Counties at this time is actually looking at how we can get all those dollars out to our rural communities as well. I believe that we will get that done, and that will help immeasurably. But finally, I have to say that long-term, really, I think the answer is going to be in infrastructure. You know, as we move forward, creating jobs, we're really going to have to look at water infrastructure, road infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, because that creates jobs and it gets people back to work immediately. And I know that in the past, past history, when we faced a large depression, those were some of the tactics and challenges and things that we used to get people back to work quickly.
Yeah, sorry. You've got to keep moving.
Okay.
All right. Chair Bernard.
Well, you know, we've been waiting a long time for the federal government and the state government to step up and help us out. I hope that happens. First off, the citizens should fill out their census form because that census is going to mean a lot to the county about how much money we get from the federal government. Sitting and waiting for infrastructure money, I've been waiting for almost 11 years. Haven't seen a lot of infrastructure money. But thanks to the metro bond, housing bond, Clackamas County has a lot of projects ready to go. We have one in Gladstone, we have one in Oregon City, and we have one in Milwaukee. If we can get people back to work as soon as possible through those, using those dollars, that's the kind of project we need to do. House Bill 2017 provided funding for roads. We have an opportunity to put a lot of people back to work building the infrastructure we need. But one statement that was made was that maybe the county could reduce employer taxes. Well, we don't have employer taxes. We only have property taxes. That's how we live. 18 cents out of every dollar you pay in taxes goes to the county, and more than 50% of that goes to the sheriff's department. So what we need to do is take the dollars we're going to get with that housing bond and build roads, and we're going to build housing to address the shortage of housing. And that's the work we're going to do, and it's going to actually happen. We're not going to wait. Thank you.
Thank you, and great segue as we move into housing and development. This time, each of you will have 30 seconds to respond. So we do, again, have a lot of ground to cover, so I ask you to be as succinct as possible. The question, we're going to start with position three first. What measures can the county take to address the housing deficit? Bill Osborne, would you start, please?
Yes, thank you. I believe opening up more areas and working with builders who are building entry-level housing is important. Perhaps looking at our housing codes, any change of those might also benefit. At some point, with changing to those, maybe we'll see like a tiny house village where people go buy a small parcel of land and have a small house on it. Apparently, builders have to pay tens of thousands of dollars in system development charges and permit fees upfront. I believe we need to change the system so the fees come out when the house is sold at closing. This way, I think homes could be built quicker and at less cost, and hopefully, those savings could be passed on to the homeowners, which would help hopefully to lower the cost of housing and would continue the same revenue generated.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. And this is what measures can the county take to address the housing deficit?
We have already taken many, many measures, not the least of which is, you know, our permitting process, how we do land use is expedited. We're very careful looking at how we raise fees. All of that is happening. But as my good colleague and friend, Commissioner Bernard, said, we already have projects that we have pulled together under the umbrella of our Housing Authority of Clackamas County. we already have projects that we have pulled together under the umbrella of our Housing Authority of Clackamas County throughout the county. And I know that Jim mentioned Gladstone. We also have affordable housing units and density increases that we're working on in the Milwaukee area across from Providence Hospital. We are looking at our public housing and seeing how we can get land densified. There's another area on Holcomb in Oregon City, for example, where we can increase the capacity and the density in order to really help folks below 30%, below AMI and 60 to 80% AMI. And there, well, one more thing, the PedCorps project on 82nd is giving us over 200 units of affordable housing.
Thanks, Commissioner. Evan, would you like to chime in? We're still with seat position three.
Yeah. I think we need to become closer to sovereignty.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Very succinct. Well, with that, we'll switch to seat, excuse me, the seat for the, position one for the chair. Commissioner Bernard, could you please lead us off on what measures you think the county can do to address the housing deficit?
Martha stole a lot of my stuff, but Milwaukee, Gladstone, Oregon City, and the PedCorps project are two projects we're doing. But at this point, I'd like to talk about the Veterans Village. We, we built little pods and got veterans off out of the forests, out of the ditches, out of the trails and into pods. And those pods, oh, last I heard, 19 people had transitioned into permanent housing. We also built a project in Oregon City that I'm sure is full now for veterans. Next thing we got to do is get children off the street and into housing and families. So we're working really hard and I'm hoping, I am supporting the Here Together measure to build affordable housing and support housing for the citizens.
Thank you. And Tudy Smith, thank you so much for joining us. We're glad you could make it. Would you like to chime in as you're running for seat position one as well? What measures can the county take to address the housing deficit?
Well, the house of, the price of housing, as we know, is very expensive. The costs of land development and fees from government are sky high and has hampered our new development. Right now, tight zoning land has created an artificial shortage that prevents the free market from expanding. These impermits and system development charges keep rising with no end in sight. As far as the Affordable Housing Bond is concerned, I think that's important. And I think we can get through that by offering temporary housing to individuals while supplying the tools for the people to find sustainable employment and obtaining jobs and the skills and the changing workforce. Permanent government housing is very expensive and it's also can drain our county coffers and our taxes from people like our citizens who are paying those taxes. Likewise.
I'm sorry, we're just, we're trying to keep these at 30 seconds because we have a lot of ground to cover and 90 minutes will go by very fast. I'm sorry. Please don't take offense. I said this earlier. We just have to try and keep everyone on, on schedule. And with that, we'll go to seat position four. Mark Scholl, would you please lead us off?
Yes, to address the housing deficit, there are two major causes to the housing deficit. Restrictive Oregon land use laws and metro restrictions. We must make changes to allow the free market to build out the housing units we need at prices our people can qualify for. We must zone in order to build. To do that, we need a strong coalition of counties and state legislators to work at changing those restrictive laws that hold back our progress on housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Humberton?
Thank you. Well, until voters change the rules through, through changing metro or change the state, I'm going to focus on what we can do and what we are doing with the resources that we have. 212 units being built and ready to open at Audi Road. 23 transitional housing for veterans, 24 units of veteran housing in Oregon City, 400 new units in Milwaukee. And when those are all done, we will be looking at the, the properties in Gladstone and also in Oregon City to add additional units. Those are all already financially in the pipeline to be, to be moved forward. So we are doing what we can with the resources that we have. And finally, with the housing bond, we're looking at about 800 units. Some of that money will go to the projects I've already mentioned, but it will also expand our capacity to do others.
Thank you.
In the meantime, we can't blame the state. We can't blame metro. We have to work with them to get the most resources for Clackamas County we can.
Thank you. Brianna?
Thank you. I think we need to switch our focus to housing affordability because affordable housing is anything but. It also destroys the incentive to build and the incentive to rent out properties. We need to address economic development and reduce barriers to entry for builders. One idea that I have would be temporarily waiving permitting fees for developers who agree to help fund critical infrastructure upgrades, knowing that money would only be used for roads or building a new school, for example. We do until that deficit is closed and we make the county a more attractive place to live and to create.
Thank you. All right, we're going to switch back and go back to position three again. How should the county ensure the 2008 Affordable Housing Bond is effectively spent? Commissioner Schrader, would you please start?
Well, basically, the Metro Bond at this point is anticipated to generate $652.8 million in, in bonds. And essentially, if you really want to see our implementation strategy, we have a local implement, local implement, implementation strategy under the, under the umbrella of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And so you really do need to check that website. It lays out in one document what the strategies are going to be for implementation. So some of the data I have is we only have 41% of the affordable homes to meet our needs at this point. So with these new dollars, we're going to create housing for more than 2,500 residents. That will be 108, 112 new affordable housing units. 406 units with two bedrooms or larger, 40% of those units for extreme low-income families with 30% or less of area medium income. And affordable houses for people earning 61 to 80% of AMI. And that's kind of how we're going to be looking at it. It would strongly suggest if people want it in even more detail, go to the Housing Authority website, on the Clackamas County website, and you will see exactly how those dollars are going to be, be spent and how they're going to be utilized to increase the capacity we have in the county.
Thank you. Bill Osborne?
Thank you. And a lot of this stuff is already implemented. But I'll say I believe we need to be open and transparent with it. We need a lot of public oversight to ensure every dollar gets the most bang for the buck. We need a process where the people building the housing are also represented. And we need to make sure that we don't have to have any issues that will slow down construction or, or make it more complicated. Also, anything for more funding, any grants and such we can attach to this would be beneficial. Because I think all of us here, you know, at the end of the day, we just want to serve the residences as good as we can.
Thank you. Evan?
Well, actually, the county, they can actually borrow at a lower interest rate. And there's a lot of people in the county who have debt, you know, on credit cards and such that can actually be over 20%. So kind of work out a deal with some of the people and get them a job so they can pay off the bills.
Thank you. We'll go to seat one. Tudy Smith, would you like to start us off?
Well, sure. As I said before, by offering temporary housing, not permanent housing, to give these people the chance to learn skills, to get a good job and go forth in life. I think if they realize the housing is temporary, not permanent, just like Clackamas County taxpayers who have to go to work, get a job so they can pay their rent and mortgage. Permanent housing is really a beast that continually needs to be fed by increased taxes that will never be satisfied. Our taxpayers aren't guaranteed housing. We need to work on the cost of housing and that's through availability of land, less permitting fees and regulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, we're working closely with Metro and of course, our finance department to track how those funds are spent, including outside auditors that will watch those dollars. I think, you know, one thing that we decided just this week or last week was that it isn't necessarily called permanent housing anymore. If your income increases, we ask you to move on. We, we have space, a lack of space. The other thing we're doing is we're finding builders that can build housing for less than, you know, 200,000 or 300,000 a square, I mean, $300 a square foot. And the last project we selected is somewhere around $187. So we're actually moving forward and finding partners that can build housing at affordable prices without giving away a lot of taxes.
Thank you. And seat position four, Ken Humberton?
Martha covered a, a good portion of it, but I would simply point out that the vast majority of people that are in our public housing are either senior citizens on extremely low income or people with mental or physical disabilities that are highly unlikely to be able to go back out into the workforce. I will simply leave it at that, that they're, they are friends and neighbors that are considerably less fortunate than the rest of us that are doing this Zoom meeting.
Thank you. Brianna?
Focusing on how to make sure it's effectively spent, I would say that procurement, which increases the cost of any project, needs to be strategically data mined. And we need to use the power of data and technology in government, coupled with the power of accountability, to ensure that every dollar is spent properly. Have a flyover here, but.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the county budget and the, for the sake of time. With that, we'll start with the chair position first, position one. How will you address the county budget going forward, knowing there will be major shortfalls? Commissioner Bernard, would you like to start us off?
Well, until the, the virus issue, we had it already resolved. We have not filled a lot of positions. We started out with perhaps a $15 million shortfall, got it down to four, and then over a matter of months, we would have had it solved. Now, we're going to ask some of our departments, using our analysis, to take 15% cuts. Now, when 50% of your budget goes to the Sheriff's Department, that's a challenge. So we're looking at areas where maybe what we're doing is not as effective or efficient and we're going to make that, you know, our priority. The commission's worked really hard to address those challenges. And frankly, I, it's hard to say until we figure out what programs that are grant funded won't be getting the grant dollars from the federal or state government. And at that time, we're going to have to figure out what kind of adjustments need to be made. But we're very close to a balanced budget already.
Okay.
And we, but we, by the way, have balanced our budget since the, probably 100 years.
Wonderful. Tudy?
Well, I think what needs to be done is prioritize services. County government can't be all things to everybody. If you look on the website, there's 75 different types of departments that take funding. I think we need to prioritize what the citizens want. We need to ask questions. Is this duplicated services within departments? Is this a feel-good program? And also, I think each department needs to reconcile their budgets on a monthly basis and not assume they have money to spend throughout the year going forward. You start by each slide, each line item, and you realize a $10,000 savings here or $25,000 savings and pretty soon you're up to $1 million. We have to be able to say no to some of the increased spendings. I think we need to look at the services that we're paying for, maybe work on not funding some of our outside contractors, some of our outside consultants, and let the employees do some of the work. I think we just need to look at tightening our budget because we don't know the ability of the taxpayers to pay the property taxes to continue with our county budgets. One of the most vital services that we have at Clackamas County is our taxation and assessment department because they collect the taxes. That may not be popular service, but the county still has obligations to pay in the form of debt, keeping our citizens, our good employees working and going forward with our health clinics, our public sector, public safety.
Thank you. We really are trying to keep these at 30 seconds. Sorry.
I didn't see a flag. Is there a button?
Uh, no, I have a timer and unfortunately, it's not loud enough, so I have to be the one awkwardly interrupting everyone. Up next is seat three, Commissioner Schrader, if you'd lead us off, please.
Okay, well, as I've already said, we are using a new managing results process that ties budgets to tangible outcomes. So that's going to give us essentially the roadmap we need to make appropriate efficiencies. And Jim is correct. We have already asked our departments to do a 15% budget cut. And we will be analyzing that with our budget committee starting Wednesday. They're a group of folks who are also have expertise in professionalism, accountants, people who have done public budgets, as well as the commission working with that. I do want to add that we've already had layoffs. Basically, the tourism department has pretty much been decimated because the TRT tax dollars are not coming in. The first, and we've been talking to our employees about furloughs and how that might work. But I think that the budget we're going to be facing this time is probably going to be unprecedented. And it's really going to make us, I think, literally, potentially, even go to a zero-based budget where we really have to take a look at what's working, what isn't working, and just really make some pretty, pretty, I think, very, very tough choices.
Yes. Evan Dyer?
I'm actually going to block the question. How would you address the budget?
Yes. Sorry. The question is, how will you address the county budget going forward?
No, I'm just going to block it.
Oh, you're going to block it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Sorry, misunderstood you. Bill Osborne?
Thank you. And I know some of this has already been done with the county. But I would say we need to, you know, look where we could trim some fat. Sometimes having new eyes on a situation also helps to discover things. Certainly don't want to cut jobs. I know the COVID issue has, has made that a reality. But once we get past that, just because it has very negative ripple on worker morale. We have a lot of good people that work for the county and they should feel safe and secure in their employment. And I also support what the county's currently doing and not filling nonessential positions moving forward to cut back. I would support that moving forward.
Thank you. With that, perfect timing. With that, we'll move on to seat four, Commissioner Humberton?
Thank you. So what we are currently doing is making major changes in our financial department, including personnel. We're also looking at buying up-to-date software for prognostication going forward because our, our software is about 20 years old. We have 150 vacancies that we are keeping. We did not hire 500 to 700 seasonal employees that we normally hire, which is a major savings. And we will be looking at programs that are not part of our ultimate goals, travel and training, contract services, embracing more technology, the possibility of furloughs and pulling contingencies from, from different departments back into the general fund. And I had a conversation with our general manager today and he assures me that our budget going forward on July 1st will not only be balanced, but that we won't have to have any department-wide layoffs.
Thank you. Brianna?
Thank you. I think that cuts and hikes are outmoded forms of managing budgets. We need data-driven modeling and budgets and projections. We need to take a clear look at how every dollar is being spent. I believe a forensic audit of the general fund, as well as every agency, is urgent right now. Not to point the finger at anybody, but to have a clear idea of where we're actually at. At this point in time, I personally believe it's negligent to promise cuts or hikes until we have this vital information. Tactically minding the budget will create a spigot of funds that can be better spent.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mark?
Yes. Well, this COVID thing certainly has messed up the rest of the year, no doubt. We'll need to look at what we can cut from any function that's not absolutely imperative that the county's doing. And also look at the possibility of asking the departments for recommendations on how to cut costs even further and to then freeze hiring new contracts. And then when we extrapolate revenue projections for next year, we've got to be very, very careful and look at the lean side and not get unrealistic. and look at the lean side and not get unrealistic. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, we'll start with you this time, at seat position four. Knowing we have more needs for roads, public safety, social services, et cetera, than our current funding sources can provide, how do you propose we address them? If you propose cutting expenses, what specifically do you suggest we cut? If you should raise, if we should raise additional revenue, what sources should we explore? Can we start with Mark?
Yes, okay. I would say hire only one new employee for every two that retire, possibly freeze salaries and benefits if we need to, and do not use emergency spending loopholes to get around budget rules. With each department head and the budget department, look at every function being performed by the county personnel that is not an absolute imperative function, and then make cuts accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna?
Thank you. I would say through clear-eyed budgeting that is data-driven, cost opportunity modeled, and where accountability is demanded alone will help free up funds being improperly spent. We also need to leverage and build relationships with both public and private entities to develop strategies and make a stronger Clackamas County.
Thank you. Commissioner Humberton?
Would you repeat the question for me, please?
Knowing we have more, excuse, yes, knowing we have more needs for roads, public safety, social services. Oh, now my timer goes off loud enough. Than our current funding sources can provide, how do you propose we address these needs? If you propose cutting expenses, what specifically do you suggest we cut? If we should raise additional revenue, what sources should we explore?
Well, in the last question, I already answered the questions to the cuts are looking at, so I don't think I need to repeat that. In terms of revenue, and I'll speak specifically to roads, we have more roads in Clackamas County than any other county in the entire state. And yet we have no local source of income for those roads. Our neighbors to the, to the west and north have four and two separate funds locally for their funding for their roads on top of the state funds. That gave them forty nine million dollars and seventeen million dollars in extra funding for their roads. So we passed the VRF, and I know that's a question that would be, would be coming up. And I, I've said before, and I will say again, we own that decision. It was the right decision to make. The roads are the single most important asset that the county owns. By the county, I mean the public of this county, and everything is dependent upon those roads being serviceable. So in this particular case, raising a fee was absolutely important. Going forward, right now, I don't support raising any additional fees. I don't support raising any additional taxes. But I can point out that colleagues that used to serve on the board in 2016 also supported raising additional funds through a gas tax. So I think they recognized the need was in fact there.
Thank you. And with, we'll go to position three, Bill Osborne, please.
Thank you. On public safety, I think that's always important. And I'm not sure if there's currently a bond, but I know usually the voters are pretty open to funding their police departments or sheriff's office through that. So if additional funds were needed, that would be the direction I would look at, putting that to the voters. Also, I, I'm into looking into any public-private partnerships that we can go through, especially the social services. There's a lot of private individuals or companies or groups out there that are helping people similar to what the county is. And I think if we work together with those groups, we can do things a lot more efficiently, and we can help a lot more people without necessarily raising more, raising more revenue. Because, you know, everybody talks about cutting expenses, and cutting expenses, when you do that, usually it's your working-class families that shoulder the burden of that cut. So I don't know that that necessarily is beneficial to anybody.
Evan, would you like to speak to the question?
Oh, the Green Bay's on me. Um, I think it's just try to look at and kind of rank the priorities, you know, there's a lot of things with your ranking, kind of. It'll help, I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I'd like to say to everyone here, a lot of what has already been mentioned is already something that this county has been doing, been doing for many years, since I've been here since 2003. We always do data-driven modeling. That is how we do the budget. In fact, this time around, we are remodeling the budget to get leaner and meaner and really start to move into the 21st century with our budget practices. So that, to me, is one of the key things we're moving towards. We also have an internal auditor that examines every single department throughout the year to kind of be on the lookout for something that, you know, needs to be adjusted or something that we're not aware of. And it has worked very, very well for us to catch problems before, or challenges be before they become a big problem. It's been one of the key things we've been doing for the last three and a half years since I've been there. So that is also going to help us essentially maintain a budget and really make people be accountable and our departments be accountable for what they spend. And the other thing of this is because we're moving to a new accounting procedures, okay, we will find dollars that will not be sequestered in various departments. They are going to be examined on a monthly basis. And those dollars really will go back to the general fund. That's a key piece of what we're doing right now. We can no longer afford to have our departments, you know, kind of keeping a little bit of money on the side. And that's the reason we're modernizing our processes we speak.
Thanks. Chair Bernard?
Well, what Martha said, except we don't keep money on the side. We, you know, we're, we are data-driven. We're also asking our employees, what can we do to reduce expenses? What are the best investments we can make? We're using performance audits with our internal auditor who is doing audits. I'm also on the T2020 task force, looking at transportation funding. I am not in support of increasing property taxes. And the voters will decide how we're going to fund those huge projects. It's important to Clackamas County because McLaughlin Boulevard is a great investment opportunity. And of course, the Sunrise project could open up lots of land for redevelopment in the future.
Thank you. Tudy Smith?
Well, thank you. As I said before, I think, you know, there are seventy five different departments at Clackamas County. And to think that we're going to continue with all seventy five departments moving forward is not realistic. I think we're going to have to consolidate some agencies and departments together. I think we need to share services. I think we need to move forward and decide really hard what contractors, what outside consultants need to go. For instance, I would, I would cut the lobbyists. Our county commissioners and our department heads can fill in some of that lobby activity during our session. I think that's something that can, in fact, we may know the issues better than the lobbyists themselves have done. I think it's been too easy in the past to hire a consultant. And you talk about laying off fifteen percent. Well, that's going to have to come in the form of budget cuts on actual people. Instead of hiring outside consultants, let's train some of our employees to do some of the work that we've relied on for people in the past. There is absolutely no appetite right now for increased taxes. The fact that the vehicle registration fee was overturned by the current county commissioner has angered the electorate. And as far as increased money for roads, let's be patient because there's new gas tax coming in from the state of Oregon. Let's not panic over the road situation. It will work itself out.
Thank you so much. With that, we're going to move on to governance. Please, please, please keep your answers to thirty seconds because we still have a lot of ground to cover. Should Clackamas, should the Clackamas County Commission positions be elected by districts rather than at-large? Let's start. Tudy, would you like to start?
Oh, yeah, that's a great question. Of course, I would look at districts, assuming that there's support for it. It's been studied in the past. We've had work commissions and forces set up to look at, to look at it. We need to be in compliance with the Oregon revised statutes. And when I was a former commissioner, we studied and looked at it. We need to be legal. Clackamas County is a statutory county. And some of the counties in Oregon that have districts are home rule county. We might need to make some legal adjustments moving forward. A model can be defined, and the public will need to be asked. But yes, I think it's probably a good idea as our population is increasing in Clackamas County.
Thank you. Chair Bernard?
No, I don't support districts. You know, the problem is, is that we, as commissioners, represent the entire county. It doesn't really work in Salem. It doesn't work in Washington, DC when we fight for our own community rather than look at the country as a whole, the state as a whole, and the county as a whole. Ken spends a bunch of his time up on the mountain. We used to divide the county into portions. And I had the mountain portion and other people had other portions, but we are committed to communicating.
Thank you. I will go to seat position four. Brianna, would you like to start?
Thank you. Yeah, I absolutely support positions going by districts rather than at-large. If you take, for example, a yard sign. My, for my campaign, behind our sign is, with every story is a life changed. We need, we need our elected leaders to be part of our community and enrich our community. Need our elected leaders to earn every vote and reflect the communities in which they live, in my opinion.
We'll go to Mark, please.
Yes, by having commissioners elected by a specific district, that district can have a more focused influence on their commissioner. And that commissioner will then need to act as a direct and responsible representative of that district. District-specific elections put more power in the people and in their ability to affect the future of their district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner, sorry, who did, we just did Mark. Sorry, I'm losing my mind. Commissioner Humberton, sorry.
I do not support districts. I've had a lot of experience in, in various and sundry boards. And the problem with districts is that one of two, a couple of things happen. One, it becomes very parochial, so the politician only represents his little district or her little district. There's no incentive for that politician to go and talk to anybody else anywhere else in the region. Right now, it's a lot harder for us to campaign countywide, and it should be hard for us to campaign countywide. We need to be out there talking to everyone that we possibly can in every area of this county and not just our own little district.
Thank you.
Parochialism is what will occur, and it does not serve the public well.
Thanks. Commissioner Schrader?
I don't, I've never supported districts. And the reason I haven't is because I've seen how functional the legislature can be via district. And by the way, we're also officially nonpartisan, which to me is a far better way to be working with people. And I believe it's my job to earn the vote in every, every part of this county. And I don't want to be just, and I've had thirty six years in rural Clackamas County. I have about twelve years in urban Clackamas County, and I know urban, I know suburban, I know rural, I know the mountain. And frankly, that's the way.
Thank you. Evan?
Well, I'm going to answer the last question. So a lot of people actually think that big government doesn't work. However, we've got a county, and all the people pay taxes into the county, so they all have something at stake. So I think running the county kind of as a business in some cases could actually help. There's actually employees of the county who have spare time, if they can do other business projects. You know, maybe we create a fifteen billion dollar company or something, you know, then you can use taxes, do those kinds of things. And they say it doesn't work, so challenge them sometimes. I mean, we've got extra time. And then they get like, kind of like those dividend checks like in Alaska with oil. So that was the last question.
Thank you. And just real quickly, do you support Clackamas County being elected by districts rather than at-large?
Not at this time.
Sorry?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay, thank you. And Bill Osborne?
Thank you. I don't have a direct answer on this. I'm kind of on the fence. I see benefits and, and, you know, negatives to both sides of it. I see the benefit of having people who live in a neighborhood, not just visit it, represent that. But I do see there are issues with that, too. So I would say I don't really have a definitive answer on that. I'm, I'm on the fence and open to discussion on that.
Okay, thanks, Bill. We're going to do one more question with governance, and we're going to go into our lightning round. How do you, we're going to start with position three, and Bill, if you would start us off, how do you propose the county should work with Metro going forward?
Well, I believe the, I believe the county is currently trying not to get, not upset the bully that keeps gut punching us every day and stealing our lunch money. I, I think Metro is trying to grow bigger and bigger at every election as they take hundreds of millions of dollars, of tax dollars. And a lot of that is decided by voters in Portland who do not represent Clackamas County's best interest. So I believe it's a time for us to look at the relationship with Metro and Metro as a whole and see whether the benefits outweigh the costs of it. My personal feeling is that we may either want to part ways with Metro, which I know is a, is a big ordeal and not the realistic overnight thing to do, or look at moving where Clackamas County residents decide the Clackamas County portion of Metro measures, which would, of course, break that up, and again, probably not doable without some, some changing of laws. But yeah, basically, I guess to sum it up, my, my thoughts of Metro is I think they do a lot of good things, and I think they're trying to overreach right now, and that's costing a lot of money. And I don't think the residents of Clackamas County are reaping those rewards.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
I would like to say I've always worried about Metro scope creep. And remember, not all of our county is under the umbrella of Metro. So we have portions of our county being impacted by Metro's county that is not impacting one way or the other, whether helpful or negative. Helpfully, certainly not, and other rural areas of our county. And my attitude towards Metro is just to verify everything they say and to be very careful with how we work with them. They are there statutorily, and I have not always agreed with them on every single issue. In fact, I have some issues with them now, but we have to work with them because they're there. You don't have to love them. You don't have to hate them. But in the end, you're going to have to work with them unless something changes at the state level. It takes away some of the statutory power.
Thank you. Dear, it looks like we've lost Evan. I will try to get him connected again. But let's go back to how the county should work with Metro going forward. Commissioner Bernard?
I'm not always happy with Metro either, but they, they have been great partners when you treat them well. We receive lots of grant dollars from them. They're also in control of the transportation funds from both the federal and state government. So if we weren't part of that group, we wouldn't get any money for transportation dollars. You know, they, I recently spent a lot of time with them, twenty-two meetings on the T2020 project. And the fact that we can sit down, discuss our issues, and work out problems such as the Stafford Triangle, they, they're not always such terrible people as some people think they are.
Tudy?
Well, Clackamas County needs to represent Clackamas County and not abdicate control over to any regional or state government. In the past, and I've been on these committees when I was a former commissioner, Commissioner Metro has punished the county if we didn't agree with them by withholding our road funds. And as far as metro parks are concerned, how many metro-funded parks are in Clackamas County? I'm a big supporter of the Wyomat Falls Legacy Project, but you know what? Just can't seem to get off the ground. Maybe the questions that we need to ask is this: How well is Metro working with the county? Is Metro listening to the county? Metro will try to implement four new taxes since 2018 in a time of untold hardship. Clearly, they're not listening to the people.
Thank you. Commissioner Humberton?
Thank you. I don't concern myself with whether Metro should or shouldn't exist. That's a decision that the voters made once before, thirty years ago. And until they change that decision, our job as county commissioners is to work with Metro and figure out how to beg every bit of resources from Metro into Clackamas County that we possibly can. And one thing that I do know about working with people is that when you insult them, call them names, or blame your problems on them, you will be unsuccessful in working with them. In the last three years, we have built good, positive working relationships with them, and that has paid off in a lot of grant money that we have received from Metro. And to give Chair Bernard credit where it is due, on the, on the transportation bill, we started Chair Bernard credit where it is due on the, on the transportation bill, we started out at zero for the sunrise project and with his work, working with Metro in a cooperative manner, we have a hundred and eighty million dollars committed to that sunrise project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes, the Board of Commissioners must let Net Metro know that the people of Clackamas County, working through their county commissioners, will take the leadership control of our county and its future. Any Metro measure that is not in the best interest of the county as a whole must be rejected by the board. Metro will not be the tail that wags the Clackamas dog. We need change at the state level in the law so we, that, we can get transportation dollars direct to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Brianna?
Uh, I propose we don't. We should be talking about pulling out of Metro right now and in order for a partnership to work, we have to be viewed as a partner. Um, I personally have never once heard anybody say that they feel equitably represented by Metro. Um, so we need to be asking ourselves to be working with them at all now and especially in light of the situation we're in currently.
Well, thank you all. For those of you that are a ten, a ten dear participant right now, if you would like to ask questions, I would encourage you to use the chat function at the bottom of your screen. We're gonna enter into a lightning round, so these are one word answers, that's the new challenge.
You hear me?
Yes, Evan, welcome back. Um, so we're going to be into the lightning round now. So the first question, we're gonna go in the order on the screens. So Ken, if you would start off, then Bill, then Jim, then Mark and so-and-so. Uh, do you support or oppose the two hundred and fifty million here-together ballot initiative? Excuse me, ballot initiative?
Yes.
Bill?
I oppose it.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Mark Scholl?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
No.
Tudy Smith?
No.
Brianna Sagdal?
No.
Evan Guyer?
I wasn't in the administration process.
Has Clackamas County been treated, and we'll do the same order again, has Clackamas County been treated equitably in the T twenty twenty getting there together initiative? Commissioner Humberson?
Yes.
Bill Osborne?
I don't believe so, no.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Scholl?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, thank the Commissioner Bernard.
Tudy Smith?
Not really.
Brianna Sagdal?
Not really.
Evan Guyer?
Yes.
Do you, so, uh, do you support or oppose the five billion getting there together Metro ballot initiative? Commissioner Humberson?
Yes.
Bill Osborne?
I oppose.
Chair Bernard?
Yes.
Mark?
Oppose.
Commissioner Schrader? Commissioner Schrader, do you sup- support or oppose the five billion getting there together about Metro ballot initiative? It's a mouthful.
Not at this time with what's going on, no.
Okay, Tudy Smith?
No new taxes.
Brianna Sagdal?
Uh, no, I oppose it.
Evan Guyer?
I'm not sure at this time.
Okay. Uh, last question, briefly in one sentence, what does one meaning, what one meaningful step should the county take to address the climate crisis? Commissioner Humberson?
I would electrify, electrify more of our fleet and I support more alternative energy installations on our buildings and um, lead certification on any construction that we do.
Thank you. Bill Osborne?
I believe this is a global, a global issue in the county is just a grain of sand on the beach. We need to work with state and federal governments on this. Raising ta- taxes however is not a meaningful step and does nothing but make life less affordable.
Great.
What Ken said and then reduce congestion on I two oh five and build the sunrise.
Mark Scholl?
Keep business taxes low to spur efficient equipment investment and innovation and transportation efficiency and build vehicular lanes to reduce millions of lost man-hours and wasted fuel and traffic congestion. Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I really think that we needed to be working with our state, federal partners to improve the electric grid because I think one of the things we need to be doing is moving towards different forms of transportation. And one of the drawbacks to that is we don't have the grid capacity to do that. So when we talk about things like reducing carbon, we also have to start talking about infrastructure that needs to be built to allow that to happen.
Tudy Smith?
Well, I don't accept the premise that somehow Clackamas County is responsible for for all the atmospheric pollution and the best way to avoid pollution in the first place is to get traffic moving by increasing road capacity, thereby avoiding gridlock where emissions puke smoke from cars and exhausts.
Brianna?
Yeah, so the one thing that I would do to transform uh, how we approach this policy issue, um, uh, or is trans, excuse me, is transform how we approach this policy issue because there are things um, outside of the partisan proposals that can cost less and have a greater impact, like empowering firefighters, expanding our rural airports for fire mitigation, expanding roads and addressing infrastructure.
Thank you. Evan Guyer?
Uh, well, we're at is quite close to peak oil. Um, so if we're halfway gone and you burn the other half, I don't know exactly what happens.
Thank you. All right, well, I would like to encourage our participants to use the chat feature at the bottom of your screen if you would like to ask a question. We do have one from Daryl Winnend and he um, I am assuming is asking those of you that are opposed to the here-together proposal. If not a regional plan to address homelessness like here-together's proposal, then what do you propose? Those of you that are opposed to that, I'll have you.
I'm not.
Well.
To those of you that are opposed to the here-together proposal, to those of you that are opposed, if a regional plan, if not a regional plan to address the homelessness like the here-together proposal, then what do you propose?
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. The whole, I've done a whole video on my website on the homeless issue and I think we need to first identify the causes of homelessness. Is it a job loss? We can find a job. Is it a mental illness? We can treat it. Is it addiction? There are programs. In order, and to, once we identify the cause of the homelessness, Clackamas County through the Sheriff's Department is already doing this, putting people in a program to make sure they get to a place where they can be self-sustainable, self-sustainable. Some of our temporary housing is very good for them. I've known people who are homeless who have gone through the programs and it's successful. Now, the homeless situation, I think a lot of it's caused by the cost of a high cost, the high cost of housing, uh, or land use regulations, our fees are not permitting, that is, that is just, you know, operating as a cash cow for governments, but yet it's not serving the citizens well. A lot of people have lost their homes, have been kicked out of apartments because of the high rents. Uh, when prices of houses increase, that, the affordability of being able to make a mortgage payment is terrible. And so we really need to look at the underlying causes of homelessness before we start throwing a huge regional um, solution to it where, let's face it, Clackamas County is the smallest county in the tri-counties and we always end up on the short end of the stick.
Would someone else who is opposed to the here-together measure like to speak to this?
Uh, I will. It, it's not that I'm opposed to the result, they're trying to get, it's just that I'm thinking, uh, I, I don't believe that Metro necessarily, this is in their wheelhouse or this is something they should be doing. And I, I believe also, if I understand this right, it's only gonna benefit half of Clackamas County, so we're gonna be paying a lot into this and we have homeless people throughout the county. I think this issue needs to be handled more a- at a state level with work of the cities and the county together and the federal level, level. I think we need mental health facilities and health. That's a big problem with this. Even the substance abuse is, is a mental condition which is, is treated um, you know, through, through facilities and such and rehabilitation programs. I think that we're just trying to throw money at this problem to get it to go away and we're not gonna fix it. And if we're gonna spend money on it, let's make sure we get it done right. Let's get those people off the streets, let's get them the care they need and let's help them become productive members with homes and, and so they feel secure and are a part of society. And uh, instead of just throwing money at this because it's, it's something that sounds good, so that's why I oppose it.
Thank you. And anyone else like to? Yes?
Nellie, I couldn't, I, apparently I was muted. So one of the reasons I don't like these yes or no questions is because you can't, can't really qualify what your thought process is behind it. So that made a real dilemma for me because I know all the people that have worked on this measure, they're very progressive, they care about the homeless, they see it as a huge problem, they really worked hard over a year and a half to pull this measure together. However, my big sticking point with it is this, it is not going to help the entire county. Is Clackamas County in its entirety a part of the region or not? Because what will happen is our urban areas will get the, the, you know, get more resources, but our rural communities are gonna be left out. And quite frankly, that's where, uh, when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion, when you talk about those things all my progressive friends talk about, that's where the largest number of our Hispanic population is. That's where our Russian population is. And to assume that those people don't need the same level of service to me is, is very, very concerning. And I don't know if this is true or not, but when a poll shows that it won't pass in Clackamas County, so you actually pull it closer together to the urban area, I, I just want fairness and equity with this. This should be a countywide measure. And the other thing that I have to say, these well-meaning folks who did all this work, they came to the largest chamber in Clackamas County and said, oh, oh goodness, oh, here's a great idea, we want you to sign on. Well, of course, we're in the middle of a pandemic, uh, their businesses are closed right now, they're wondering how they're gonna make payroll, they're wondering how they're gonna keep on their employees and a group where there's no really long-term relationship with, remember, politics, working with people is relationship. And when you come into a group that has not been involved with co-creating and, uh, the challenge that we're facing, of course, they're not gonna go there and I frankly thought their heads were gonna explode. I think they were very set by it and I would be more than willing to address this in the future if the entire county is involved. But I cannot take the, I cannot say that poor people out in the rural areas and who are houseless and homeless and have these needs are any less important. And I think that our friends in Portland who are progressive need to get that message from us.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak to this?
I, I completely agree with Martha. I also completely agree with Tudy and Bill. Um, and then when we take a further look into the demographic, when we start taking a look at what Clackamas County is actually comprised of, we are one of the wealthiest counties in particular and parts of the rural uh, portion of Clackamas County. So when I take a look at some of these statistics and look at, you know, the average income per household, the average household or the average home, excuse me, you know, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, I start to take a step back and think about the language of the policy and some of the points that it addresses and it doesn't feel like it's really addressing the needs of our community, but maybe more addressing the needs of uh, Multnomah County and other more urban areas. So that's, yeah, um, I, I do not feel like it's an equitable approach and I also feel like, again, we need to be looking at housing affordability because we're looking at extremely high cost even just to break ground for development. So um, I, I think we need to be looking at this in, in inverse way and start looking at the cost to build and making it less expensive and incentivizing builders who would like to come to Clackamas County and who want to build. So then that way we drive down the cost of building and then we give more people the opportunity to own homes.
Thank you. Well, with that, let's, um, we're, we've only got four minutes left and I wanna be respectful of everyone's time, but if you would each like twenty or thirty seconds, for really please, twenty or thirty seconds to do a closing remark as to why we should vote for you, please do so. We can start with Ken and do kind of the same order we did again across the screen.
Well, Nellie, did you say me?
If you don't mind.
Okay. Uh, thank you for having us again. Um, I would just like to say that, uh, you know, over the last three years, I believe we've made a significant number of improvements in Clackamas County. We've resolved quite a number of issues within our communities uh, and are working together, uh, probably as well as, as um, this county has worked with its partners in many, many years and I look forward to continuing to do so. Uh, I also look forward to continuing to represent the entire county, not just one part of the county, uh, which is why I spend a great deal of time uh, going around the county, talking to people and listening to what they have to say. Please vote for Ken Humberson.
Thank you.
For Clackamas County Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bill?
Thank you. Uh, well, again, I'm Bill Osborne. You can check out my website at www.billosborne.com. It's got a lot of information about me there, uh, and my family. We've been in these areas for over a hundred and eighty years and Clackamas County for a hundred and twenty. And I wanna thank everybody who was viewing today as well as all the, the um, all you folks that are campaigning, uh, it's a great group of people and I'm sure regardless of how the voters decide, Clackamas County is gonna be in good hands moving forward. Thank you.
Chair Bernard?
Hi, I'm Jim Bernard, your Clackamas County Chair. Um, I, if I'm re-elected, I'll be the first county chair who's actually been in uh, office for more than two terms. And so, as the chair, uh, we need stability in the future, we need to move this county forward and like Ken said, we fixed all the problems that the county had left behind by the former chair and my opponent and Clackamas County is now a trusted, reliable partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Scholl?
Yes. As I travel around the county, people are looking for representation in the Board of Commissioners with somebody who really cares about their needs and the cost of living in Clackamas County. A lot of our people are worried that they might not be able to stay here in Clackamas County, they might not be able to stay in their home. So I'm gonna stand up as a commissioner to protect the interests of the people of Clackamas County, not be concerned about external political entities, but wake up every morning and think about what can I do for the four hundred and sixteen thousand people of Clackamas County? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, thank you. Um, I've been doing this a while and I love this job and I love this county and I love uh, everything, every aspect of this job. Every day you get up and now we're in a time of unprecedented, um, you know, crisis really, a medical crisis and we're in a time where we're gonna have to rebuild our economy. We're in a time when we're going to have to really look stringently at budgets and I am a commissioner that has the experience and the leadership skills to do this. The other thing I wanna do is give a shout out to my two colleagues and that is Commissioner Humberson and Commissioner Bernard and my other two colleagues, Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Fisher. I think it's one of the best teams I've worked on since I've been a commissioner and I would like to see our team remain intact. And as you see, we don't agree on everything. We have our differences, we have our, our ways of looking at the world, but we work well together, we collaborate together. When we have a difference, it isn't personal and I really want to see this county continue to go forward, not only with my experience, but the experience of my colleagues that are sitting with me uh, on this board. My name is Martha Schrader. I'm not about being left, I'm not about being right, I'm just about moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Tudy?
Well, as a fourth generation Clackamas County resident and a farmer, former business owner of corporations, I also served in the legislature on the Ways and Means Committee during a time when we were in a recession and had declining budgets. We balanced that budget without raising taxes for some of the proposals that I presented in it that are on my website. I think it's time for fresh leadership to move forward. As a business owner, I think that we, I can help in rebuilding our businesses and putting in programs and I think as our um, county commissioner, I can work well with our departments. I have in the past, I've always worked well with uh, people. And there's a question up here, it says, you know, how would you represent people whom you disagree with? And one of the things that I feel that I can offer is, we may disagree on one or two issues, but I can certainly find common ground with about everybody that I've talked to and to move the county forward. During this time of crisis, I think it's gonna take fresh eyes. I think it's no longer a time to keep doing the same old, same old and that's what I've heard from commissioners today, uh, especially my opponent, it's time- commissioners today, especially my opponent. It's time, they continue to keep the same county programs going forward. And after a while, every single department gets watered down. We need to consolidate, we need to refine, and we need to decide what's working for the county and what isn't, and then really make the brave decisions to move our county forward.
Thank you. Brianna?
Thank you. You know, it's interesting. I was looking over voter pamphlet statements, and I came across Jim Bernard, Ken Humberson, and, you know, others from two thousand and four. And I was fascinated to find out that the voter pamphlet statements and the issues they were running on in two thousand and four, sixteen years ago, are just as relevant and just as pressing as they are today. I don't necessarily believe that being in the county commission for twenty years makes you more stable. I think it makes you more entrenched. And I think, like Tudy is saying, I agree that it's time for fresh eyes, fresh perspective. We need people with private sector ingenuity. I have a proven track record for accountability and transparency in promoting unity within Salem, bringing people together, rallying the grassroots, having citizen engagement. Those are really important things that we need in order to make positive strides forward in our county. Not to, not to argue, but to find common ground and to find citizen leadership and, and citizen engagement to go forward. I believe that this is going to take all of us working together in a united manner.
Thank you. Abby, would you like to make some closing remarks?
I have a website at www.evan.wiki. There's some information that also you can watch, or re-watch the debate. And if you want, you can also take your, take this debate, and maybe go to your friend's house, or have a party or something, watch it there. And then also, I've got, I don't know how well you can see it, but I've got a business card there. So that's just a little bit. I suppose sometimes.
Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for participating. I can't thank you enough. It's nice to have all eight faces in one place, even though we can't do it in person. To all the participants, thank you all. And I would encourage you all to join us on May third for another webinar on addressing the homelessness issue. So I think it should be very interesting. Thank you all. Best of luck in your campaigns, and everyone stay safe and healthy.